Where it is present, the State Board of Education meeting of May 17, 2022 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Mr. McMillan?
Mr. Chairman, I asked, and we distributed two resolutions. I asked that resolution calling to remove exemptions allowing Michigan public schools to distribute sexually explicit materials to minors without penalty be added as 11H and the resolution affirming, reaffirming parents' rights to challenge age inappropriate books available to students be added to the agenda for item 11I.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
So can we separate these?
They are going to be separated. They are going to be voted on separately.
Individually?
They are going to be voted on individually.
Oh, okay, I can-
Just to clarify. So the first one that we are taking is the first one that you noted?
Sure.
Resolution calling to-
Okay, yeah, so you, you can split mine.
Just repeat the first one that you-
Resolution calling to remove exemptions allowing Michigan public schools to distribute sexually explicit materials to minors without penalty.
Very good. So we have a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Snyder. Any discussion, please, if you could read it into the record.
Sure. Whereas MCL 722.676B and D, remove exemptions or provide exemptions from prosecution for disseminating sexually explicit materials to minors, whereas some parents in Michigan are increasingly seeing books and materials in schools that clearly contain, in their opinion, age inappropriate sexually explicit images and narratives, whereas neuroscience research proves that sexual stimuli harmfully wires and traumatizes underage young brains. Therefore, be it resolved, the Michigan State Board of Education calls on the state legislature to remove the exemptions provided to public school teachers, administrators, and librarians from being prosecuted for disseminating sexually explicit materials to minors while allowing reproductive health education materials that have been approved by the state law required local advisory boards, where at least half of the composition of each must be parents whose children attend schools in the district. Be it further resolved that public school districts, public school academies, virtual academies, and intermediate school districts must comply with state law 380.137 through transparency and cooperation with parents in requesting curriculum, textbooks, teaching materials, and library materials involving object, and involving objecting parents in the review process with the goal of removing age inappropriate materials.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have it read into the record. This is a, this is a straight vote on whether it goes on the agenda. This is not speaking to the merits thereof.
Well, I'd like to speak to why I want it on the agenda. You know, I see that, you know, increasingly, I think when these exemptions might have been put on in the 70s or eight, or I think it was in the 70s, that nobody would have dreamed that they'd be providing, that schools would be providing the kind of materials that we see now. I think even the state, the state of Michigan, MDE has issued instructions on how to get around these, these local advisory boards that have parents, and it's increasingly through non-instructional, so it would be through the libraries and things that they would say are not instructional. And so I, I think that they're crossing the line. It's disseminating sexually explicit materials. I don't know why they would have an exemption from prosecution. I think it's important that we-
You're speaking to the merits. This is a vote on whether it goes on the agenda or not.
Well, why, how could anybody vote yes or no if they don't know what's the, what's the purpose of the resolution?
They've seen it. It was disseminated yesterday to the entire board.
Right, but I mean, the maker is explaining what the purpose of the resolution is. Why would somebody not want to know why the maker is making the resol, the motion?
Point of order.
Please.
The only debate right now is whether or not this is going on the agenda, not the merits of what it is. So the, that is, I would ask that Mr. McMillan and other members stick to that particular issue.
Just shut up, so that's what they're saying, is just shut, McMillan, shut up because we don't want to hear from you. You know, this is, it's, it's typical. There's, I understand there's no interest in, in trying to defend the indefensible of distributing sexually explicit materials to minors. But I think obviously the maker of a motion has to explain why they want it on the agenda. And I think it's, you know, you might have to say why you would want it on the agenda is because the issue is important. And why is it important?
Fair enough, okay.
That could be debated.
So it's, so it's been done. If we could have a roll call vote, please, Marilyn.
Lipton? McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn absent, Tilly absent, Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Mr. McMillan, you have a second.
I have a second one. Resolution reaffirming parents' rights to challenge age inappropriate books available to students.
We kind of, if we could just, you're, you're making the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a second?
I'm making the motion to add it to the agenda.
Yeah, I second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Now back to you.
Whereas during a 2022 State Board of Education meeting, State Superintendent Rice stated that there are books that are not age appropriate for some children. Whereas parent, some parents challenging the age appropriateness of books available to their children at public schools have been ridiculed. Whereas Section 380.10 of the revised school code states that, quote, "It is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. The public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the parent, pupil's parents, and legal guardians to develop the pupil's intellectual capabilities and vocational skills in a safe and positive manner." Whereas Section 380.137 of the revised school code states that, quote, "In recognition of the rights of parents and legal guardians, the board of a school district, public school academy, university school, or intermediate school district shall ensure that a parent or legal guardian responsible for the care and custody of a pupil enrolled in the school district, public school academy, university school, or intermediate school district may," and then later it says, "review the curriculum, textbooks, and teaching materials of the school in which the pupil is enrolled at a reasonable time and place and in a reasonable manner. Therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education encourages parents to continue to boldly challenge any books or materials available to their children in public schools that they feel are age inappropriate, and be it further resolved that we call on public school districts to be fully transparent with parents regarding books and materials that they make available to students at their schools."
Very good.
And I would just, I'd like to just say that I actually recently sat in on a meeting with some, at a local school board, a couple of them and some parents. And it is, there's a real condescension that occurs to some of these parents. They are simply questioning the age appropriateness. This, I saw one parent talking about whether their five-year-old should be given a book, which they brought home from school, that had transgender, you know, why, why this little boy thinks he's a girl, and just things that they felt that was inappropriate, you know, and they just got attacked by one of the board members as being hateful and all this stuff. So it just, you know, we, I think that we've seen the videos as well, that, you know, there's just a real problem in this area. Parents feel intimidated. And so I think this would put the board on record that we support these parents who are simply interested in, in having things that are, they feel is age inappropriate, not be available to their children.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Just to speak to adding the motion to the agenda, we have had several emails too from parents that are concerned about specifics, which I won't speak to at this point in time. But I think it would be a good thing that we add this to the agenda.
Fair enough. Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second. It's been read into the record. Marilyn, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Lipton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did we, discussion?
There, there was discussion. Is there any additional discussion to the merits of adding it to the agenda?
Yes, I mean, given the discussion that was had, and I, I put something in writing because I felt that it was necessary. To date, my two GOP Board of Education colleagues are pushing, pushing a resolution aimed at prosecuting teachers and librarians that encourages anti-LGPTV.
Excuse me, if I could, that was the last one. This is not, that, that was already discussed. This is on the second of the two-
I'm gonna get to it.
Resolutions. If you could state your main-
Yeah, because it gives to-
To the point of getting the second element on the agenda, because that's where we are now, not the first.
Mm-hmm.
The second element.
LGBT, to me, divides children in classrooms, on playgrounds, and locker rooms, and promotes parents to hate teachers and public education. I just want to know, when will it stop? And I refuse to compromise here, especially when it means compromising or bargaining with hate. I'll just skip to the, to the bottom. But I do want to say that the hate that is expressed here is the same hate that is kindling for the murderous massacres like that in Buffalo, New York, which took the lives of 10 moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, and uncles.
There's a place for this during board member comment. It is not associated with placing this on the agenda.
Well, the truth is, the messages that I get from parents, like the one below, are those out of fear for the safety of Michigan board members across the state, school staff, and residents. And ironically, these are messages that are forwarded from members within the very organizations that are said to be represented by the proposed resolution to protect parents' rights. They too are wondering just how far this hate will go. And I just want to read a little bit of that message, because this is coming from the groups that are said to be supported.
This is, this is appropriate under board member comments, not appropriate under vote associated with something going on in the agenda.
Hey, I just got this sent to me from Michigan, Moms for Liberty. This is making us very concerned as some quite scary people's ears are perking up. Things like this could drive violence to occur. This is what was stated. Tomorrow, Tuesday, May 17, Tom and Nikki are asking for the following resolutions to be on the agenda. They will be at the first part of the meeting, a little after 9:00 a.m. Please consider calling in to comment, R.E. the resolutions. The information about required registration is below. It's likely they will not get on the agenda, but your support is still helpful for the future and more likely to make the news. I'm tired of it. When will it stop?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote on the adding of the second resolution to the agenda.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn absent, Tilly absent, Albridge?
Yes.
Motion fails. No, motion carries. Seven, or five yeses. Lipton, McMillan, Pritchett, Snyder, Albridge. Yes.
So are there, are there any other resolutions that board members would like to add to the, to the agenda? I would like the flexibility, board members, to, to add that at appropriate time during the afternoon after public comment, after public comment, just in case we have to juggle things. But it would be after public comment, one way or the other. Are there any other resolutions to add to the agenda? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote on the proposed agenda as amended.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Hmm. For now, I'll pass. I'd like to-
I had a question, sorry. Didn't we have resolutions that you all wanted to add to the agenda?
Those were resolutions that emanated from the legislative committee.
We did not vote them out of the legislative committee.
Committee Chair Lipton, do you, do you have anything to say about those resolutions?
First of all, resolutions cannot be voted out of a committee. They can merely be discussed. And then it is at the discretion of whomever brought the item for discussion to, or any other board member, to move them, to add them to the agenda. And I do not believe that there was any motion to add any other items to the agenda.
Okay, all right, very good. So, so she, she is not interested in, I hear she's not interested in moving them forward at this time. We have a, could I have a motion to move the amended agenda?
Don't. We just did that.
Yeah, we started voting on it.
So, oh, there, there we go. Merz, go ahead.
We had a motion?
I do not believe we had a motion.
Yeah, that's because I made a motion to amend it, so there wasn't a motion, I think.
Well, we'll do it again.
Yeah.
I moved that.
Motion to move the amended agenda, second by Dr. Pritchett. If we could do a roll call vote.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
I'm gonna pass for now.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn absent, Tilly absent, Albridge?
Yes.
Do we want to go back to you, Mr. McMillan? You said pass for now.
Well, I'm disappointed that the second one, my first one didn't get on the agenda.
It's hard to register your disappointment. It's a yes, no, or, or an absent.
Abstained.
Or an abstention.
I guess I'll, I'll support it.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For the, for the record, the vote to open the board meeting was unanimous. At this time, Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Okay, as we go around the table, and also I'll pick up the people that have joined virtually. To my left is Dr. Michael Rice. He's chairperson of the board and also state superintendent. To his left is Dr. Cassandra Albridge, president of the board from Dearborn. And then Dr. Pamela Pugh, vice president from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly is secretary from West Bloomfield. She is joining us virtually. She will participate but is unable to vote due to the Open Meetings Act. And then back to the table, Ms. Nikki Snyder. She's the, a board legislative committee member from Dexter. And next to her is Ms. Leah Porter. She's the 2021-22 Michigan Teacher of the Year. She's a third-grade teacher at Wilcox Elementary School in Hope Public Schools. Stephanie O'Day, usually seated at the, across the table, she is joining us virtually, ex-officio member of the board. She represents the governor. And Dr. Judith Pritchett, seated at the table, she's the board's NASB delegate, National Association of State Boards of Education, and she's a SBE Legislative Committee member from Washington Township. Mr. Jason Strahorn from Novi is a board, the board's Legislative Committee member. He is unable to join us at this time, but may be joining later virtually. And if he joins virtually, according to the Open Meetings Act, is unable to vote but can participate. Next to me is Mr. Tom McMillan, the board's treasurer from Oakland Township. And joining us virtually is Ms. Ellen Lipton. She's chair of the board's Legislative Committee. She's from Huntington Woods. She is joining virtually and voting in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Thank you.
Point of order. I, I participated on, this is directly to people participating virtually that don't have an exemption. I'm on the Michigan Indian Defense Commission. Somebody, the chairman got in trouble because they allowed somebody to participate virtually without an exemption, to participate, to talk, because they said that the changes made, was it last year, last year due to COVID, made it so that that's not allowed. And so I know the chairman said, I got in trouble for doing that. The AG made it clear that that's not allowed, the AG's office. So I just want to let you know that that's what I was told. I was surprised because I thought somebody could too. I told them, I said, I think they can, because they do at the state board meeting. Pam called in one time from overseas or something, and they said, well, it changed during the COVID when they allowed whatever, whatever it was back in the, in the spring of last year. So I mean, I certainly don't want to prohibit anybody from speaking. I just want to inform you, Mr. Chairman, that's what I was told.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Dr. Delsa Chapman, deputy superintendent for Educator, Student, and School Support, would like to make a brief introduction.
Good morning. We are very pleased to announce that Elizabeth Newell is serving in the capacity as my interim special assistant. She brings to this experience a wealth of knowledge and has been very, very helpful thus far. And Liz, we appreciate the dedication that you have in our giving at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman.
Thank you. Welcome. Instructions for public participation. The public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. First item on the committee, the whole agenda, is presentation of student reflections on career and technical education programs and advanced placement programs. During this presentation, we will hear remotely from students regarding their experiences in career and technical education programs and advanced placement programs. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, deputy superintendent for Educator, Student, and School Support, and Dr. Scott Kennick Schneck, deputy superintendent of P20 System and Student Transitions. There will be a PowerPoint presentation with CTE videos and AP testimonials. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Eisen. Thank you to the board for allowing us to share some student reflections with you this morning, both on career and technical education and advanced placement programs. We know that student voice is critical, and so this morning you're going to be able to hear and see how career and technical education and advanced placement programs have positively influenced kids from across the state. And we're going to start with career and technical education. And start with just some numbers. We served in 2021 about 103,000 students in CTE programs across the state, almost 2,100 programs, some of those with the ISD, some of those in local school districts as well. Some very positive data associated with CTE, 96% of those who are enrolled in CTE programs graduated last year. That's higher than the average graduation rate in Michigan. We know that jobs require this type of training. We know there's an employee shortage, and this type of training really helps get students into the job market. So I have a series of six videos that are going to highlight students from programs across the state, and they all have a very positive story. So we're going to start in Muskegon at their Career Tech Center. And this particular clip is going to feature some students in their healthcare program.
The Health Science Academy is a second-year program at the CTC where we go more in-depth with what you've learned in the first year, and you really get to choose your career path. Any students can expect to really dive more into future job or occupation that they're interested in, and they can go on job shadows and then an internship later in the year. They can learn more about the human body and also do things such as HOSA, which is the Health Students of America. And that goes into where you pick a job, and then you research it, and you learn skills that you might do in that job.
This place I would recommend for almost anyone. It has saved me a lot of time, and I know it will save me a lot of money in the future. Like in my class, you can get a medical terminology college credit, and it's completely free as well.
We have different opportunities to go into different jobs where you can experience what is going on. But we also offer a CNA, which would certify you as a nurse's assistant. And you can immediately go in afterwards and work in a hospital field. And you can also get your pharmacy tech. And with those experiences, you really get to know what career path that you really want to go to. But it's a way that you can experience this before you go into college. So you kind of get a better feeling of what you really want to do.
And for our next video, we're going to go to Saginaw Career Complex, featuring Emily, our student there, and her experience with IT and cybersecurity.
Whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Emily Kinica. My homeschool is SASSA. This program is IT and cybersecurity, and I specifically specialize in programming. One reason I like to come to SCC is that it's really fun to get a hands-on experience, and it allows me to be completely prepared for what's out there in the world of technology.
We are going to head to southeast Michigan now, to the Oakland Schools Technical Campuses. And this video will feature a variety of culinary arts CTE students.
I chose the culinary arts program because it's been a lifelong passion of mine. Ever since I was young, I have always wanted a cooking set for Christmas or a new apron to cook alongside my grandma in the kitchen, or a new silicone spatula to make my cookie dough perfect. It's a really great learning environment here. For the past three weeks here in class, we've been in the kitchen every single day, making a product each day, and using knives on cutting boards and helping my peers with that as well. So you really can't ask for a better experience in how to actually do things. If you're looking for a life-related skill that you can put to use in the real world and make school feel like something that's really beneficial to your future, then OSCC is a school for you.
We're going to head back to Muskegon, to the Career Tech Center. And Jordan is a student there in computer aided design, and she's going to tell her story.
I personally want to design buildings. I want to be an architect. I've always cared about, for lack of better words, legacy, leaving my mark on this world. And what's more everlasting than a building? We still go back to ancient Greece temples to marvel at their beauty, or the Roman Colosseum, and I want to add to that. My name is Jordan Hernandez. I go to school at Orchard View High School. I usually wake up at 6:00. I pick up my younger stepbrother and take him to school before heading myself to CTC. So the CTC, or Career Tech Center, is an off-campus school where you get to learn about more out-of-the-box careers, like I'm in computer aided design, or there's welding and allied health and computer programming. And it's just something that your school normally wouldn't teach you, that I get to go and learn at every day. All the staff are nice. The students are super nice. Everyone knows why they're there, and they're there for learning and a good community. And it opens up every single door pretty much in the book. We are in the Bowman's Club, which is my archery range. I shoot competitive S3DA compound archery. I am in first place for state. I know what I want for the future. I've always wanted to do something hands-on with my career path, and to be able to sit down and design, especially with my class, it's opened up more career options than I knew that there was for hands-on and designing. Put it simply, everything has to start at design, and that's what we're learning is design. So we are learning the start of everything. I work for Orchard View Childcare, so I take care of kids. No kid is the same. One over there is rabunctious and loud, and the other is sitting nice and quiet. And it's a new adventure every day. One's not going to be there, or one's going to be there and have this whole story to tell about their weekend. Since I was a child, it's been go, go, go with my family. It's always been, take steps for your future. I'm first-generation American, so my dad wants to see me have a successful future in this country. And so they've just set the stones down, and I've walked the steps.
We are going to go back to the east side of the state. Hopefully you're not getting busy on your trip here across the state. We're going to hear from Haley, who's a student at the Saginaw Career Complex in building and construction trades.
Hi, I'm Haley Tester. I go to Merrill High School. This is building and construction.
This is building construction. One thing that I really like about building construction is that I get to do things with my hands, which really helps me mentally because I'm doing something and not just sitting at my home school, listening to people kind of preach and teach. Here, we got a house starting to build. We use saws, we use drills, we use hammers. It's really kind of a class that if you don't like sitting, that you get up, you move, you're physically active. It's just, it's a really nice program to be in.
And finally, back to southeast Michigan, to the Oakland Schools Technical Campuses, here from a variety of graphic design students.
Well, my school had a day where we came and we got to see different programs, and this one was just phenomenal. The classroom was beautiful. The instructors were so engaging, and I was really excited about the things they were going to teach us. Well, so far, we've learned how to heat press vinyls, making T-shirts, learning Adobe programs, which is really useful as a professional graphic designer. There's a big focus on being self-sufficient, so you're given an assignment, and then you use your skills to get it done, which I think prepares you a little bit better for working professionally than a high school setting does. I think visiting it is really important, seeing the curriculum for yourself. You'll know it once you see it. You'll feel excited, and that's the most important thing, is being excited to get up and come here every day.
So in P-20, we talk often about how we serve about 500,000 kids every day across the three offices, and what you saw today was the experiences of about 103,000 of those students and what they get to experience every day across the state in our fantastic CTE programs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chapman. She's going to continue with the testimonials regarding students in advanced placement programs.
Thank you, Dr. Kennick-Schnack, and good morning, Board. Good morning, Dr. Rice. We move into advanced placement programs, and we would like to share that this awesome opportunity for our students, credit-bearing, college-level coursework offered in partnership with and aligned with the nationally acclaimed College Board Courses of Study. This opportunity definitely serves as a genuine opportunity to extend rigor and promote college entrance readiness. The growth in both participation and performance for students from all backgrounds reflects the hard work of students, as well as their teachers, and the commitment from the Michigan Department of Education and our local districts to provide students with greater access to academic opportunities. In our presentation, you will see and become familiar with AP students from all backgrounds, including those with average scores of one or two, who are more likely to enroll in a four-year college compared to academically similar students who did not take advanced placement courses. Over the past 10 years, across, I'm sorry, access to AP has expanded for historically underrepresented youth. Closing the equity gap in advanced placement participation is essential to giving all students in this great state of Michigan the chance to experience the benefits of challenging coursework. We will now share testimonials from Michigan students regarding their experience in advanced placement programs, and very specifically, the advanced placement examination process. We start in Dearborn Public Schools, and we start with our first student, Miriam. Miriam highlights and shared with us that she has taken eight AP courses. Her experience has been to be involved in a college-like environment, which has helped her to understand that she is now better prepared for college classes. Mohammed of Dearborn Public Schools shares the following. Enrolling in AP was one of the best decisions I've ever made. It allowed a glimpse into the effort and dedication of an education being offered in this great state of Michigan. It also helped to form work habits that will carry me in the future, shares Mohammed. He is extremely happy with his AP experience. Mariam of Dearborn Public Schools shares that the AP experience caused her to be curious, made her hardworking, and a well-rounded student. She felt confident in her ability, and she gained many fundamental studying skills. And Jack with Dearborn Public Schools shared with us that the AP experience enabled a more rigorous course load and improved his readiness for college. Moving to the west side of the state with Grand Rapids Public Schools, the students that we will now showcase very specifically shared what the advanced placement exam experience is like. Starting with Jose, Jose shared the following. I cannot think of any negative parts of the exam. The test demonstrates the ability that one deserves to do well. Sincere, shared, my teacher did a great job helping us to prepare for the exam itself. There was plenty of time for each section of the test to be completed. Lysa of Grand Rapids Public Schools shared, yes, some parts of the test, they were difficult, but getting to learn and experience new things has definitely been a reward of participating in the advanced placement programs. Judith further shared, specific to the AP exam process, the AP exam wasn't what I expected since it was my first exam ever. Overall, I learned from this, and I will implement it next year in any AP course or class I take. Ian shared the following. The experience of taking the AP exam was very interesting. I am very proud as a student. To my future AP testers, even if you don't get a score you want, take it as a learning experience and learn from your mistakes. And Abigail of Grand Rapids Public Schools. I feel I was productive with my time. The best part of the AP test was finally finishing the exam itself. Engaging and participating will make the test easier for you. And finally, with Tomlin, in regard to the AP exam experience. I felt very prepared. Future AP students should work on writing consecutive essays. Use your resources on the AP College Board to prepare. And now moving to mid-Michigan, here locally in the Lansing School District, Jeffrey shares, the AP experience prepares those who take the class and exam for the workload in college. It provides a plethora of important skills to the student, time management, consistency, higher-level thinking and reasoning. Inspiration to pursue post-high school education is an outcome for Jeffrey's experience. Moving to the east side of the state with Clement Canton Community Schools, Ashley shared that the AP program experience provided her with structure. It allowed her to take initiative to ask questions, and in her eyes, it served as a sample college experience. Monish of Clement Canton shared, it provided me with a sense of maturity and readiness, fostered infinite growth, confidence, and self-esteem. And finally concluding with Gabriella, or who is finally called Ella, she shared that the advanced placement program experience has broadened her knowledge, taught her how to study, and actually to narrow down what she would like to study in college. We thank you for this opportunity. As you can see, there are great opportunities being provided to our students in this great state of Michigan, and we have the testimonies thereof that we shared with you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Kennick-Schnack. These are testimonials in a fashion from students, and they're somewhat unvarnished in a fashion. It strikes me that we heard from last year's NBA MVP just two days ago with some of the same life lessons. I'm going to try to take the experience I had, may not have been a perfect experience, but I'm going to use it to build better experiences moving forward. And this is a person who's at the top of, literally at the top of his game, the best basketball player some believe in the world, who's reflecting upon, okay, how do I take where I am and take it to the next level, notwithstanding the fact that the season didn't end where I wanted it to? And you hear some of the same language from these young people here, both in the videos and in the testimonials. We have a presentation on Goal Four Secondary School Programming Board, also by Dr. Kennick-Schnack, Dr. Chapman, and Dr. Piles. So I thought that we'd segue right into that presentation. If we could, I'll give a snippet of an introduction, and then that will give you an opportunity, Board, to ask questions more broadly on all six secondary school programs that we feature. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on Goal Four to expand secondary learning opportunities. This presentation focuses on six distinct secondary school programs, CTE, APIB, dual enrollment, early middle college, and special education transition services. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Back by popular demand, Dr. Delsa Chapman and Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnack, as well as Dr. Brian Piles, Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. There will be no test. Presenters, welcome again.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning again, Board. Our next agenda item, as shared with Dr. Rice, is our monthly report on the progress in the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. The information will be presented by myself, Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnack, and Dr. Brian Piles, in regard to the progress that has been made this year. Specifically, today, we will present on Goal Four of the strategic plan, expanding secondary learning opportunities for all students. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnack and Dr. Brian Piles.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and thank you, Dr. Rice, and the board for giving us this opportunity to provide some updates. As Dr. Rice said, we are going to go through six post-secondary or secondary-type programs, including CTE and early middle college. We will hand it back over to Dr. Chapman, who will talk more about advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and dual enrollment programs, and then we will finish with some special education transition program data at the end of the presentation. Some of the data you have seen before. We were here before you in November, but we have some updated data, and that will be indicated on each one of the slides. So we'll start with career and technical education. And on this particular slide, you will see growth in four of the last five years. You can see, starting in '15-'16, about 108, roughly 108,000 students enrolled in CTE programs. That number grew to 111,000, about a 3,000-student increase, and then a dip in 2021, back to 102,000, about 103,000, give or take. Dr. Piles will talk a little bit maybe about perhaps some of the reasons for that dip that he's heard from the field, obviously COVID-related, but growth in the past four of the five years. And as we look to build in the coming years, we really want to build on that 1920 number, and that's the plan as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Piles, and he's going to talk about some more of the specific information regarding our CTE programs.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, State Board members. I hope that you're all doing well. Good morning, Dr. Rice. As we looked deeply into the numbers, and had conversations with the county directors of career and technical education, we talked about the reduced enrollment. And when you look at, according to the directors, when you look at some of the transportation issues that we had, and then the remote and in-person challenges that we had with our school districts, so you take into consideration a county technical campus, that many school districts will feed students into one of those, or you also look at our consortium programs. And consortium programs are usually run by a local school district, but they accept students from neighboring school districts into their CTE programming, because not everybody can offer CTE programming based on their size of student population, but it's a great way to partner within different locales so that we can provide those programs. The challenges they faced was that our district was remote, and then your district is in person, and then your district was remote, then my district was in person, and it made it difficult to maintain enrollment and continuity for the students. And so some of the schools pulled back on their enrollments because it was just so absolutely inconsistent for the students. Another concern that they articulated was transportation, because as we started looking at social distancing with transportation, and we could not put, you know, two students per seat on the bus, front to back, and we were trying to social distance students and not put as many students on buses, less students had opportunities to be transported. And then when they would look for additional bus drivers, many of you are probably not unfamiliar with all of our yellow buses with these gigantic banners saying, please come drive for us. And so it was harder to find staff to even drive buses or to fill in on days that we needed substitute drivers. And so some of those logistic issues created concern for our county directors. And so you may be sitting here thinking right now, what is the difference this year, Brian? Well, our enrollment isn't due until the summer, and so we don't even get a minimal snapshot of how many students are enrolled in our programs until our districts are required to report in the summer. And then once we receive that information, we're going to compare this year's enrollment numbers to see, did we start to rebound to the numbers that Dr. Kennick-Schnack was talking about? Did our enrollment start to go up? And while we don't expect it to fully return, we want to keep a careful and watchful eye. And so as many of you know, I have an amazing staff in my office of career and technical education, and my researchers took a look at this for us and sent me a little bit of a paragraph for you. An analysis of the one-year decrease in enrollments did not show any significant pattern in terms of locale, city, suburban, town, or rural, for Perkins Grant Regions, CPIDS, or operating agencies. And so as we look, and you look at those numbers in the right-hand one-year column difference, we couldn't attribute the loss to any particular area. It was spread across the state. And that's important for us to note, that it didn't appear that one school district or a series of school districts had all the drops. And so we're going to take the numbers that we get this summer, we'll compare them to these numbers, and then each fall, we have a career and technical education statewide update, and we're going to focus that update on enrollment and making sure that we continue to grow and look at expansion techniques so that we can have more students entering career and technical education. Additionally, we're going to work with the directors on what did they learn from COVID? And what instructional strategies have we implemented as a result of what we learned that worked well in a remote environment, so that the children, where they're in front of their teacher, they have more hands-on time? And so we're going, also, does that then provide an opportunity for our programs to then expand? Do students have to come into the Career Tech Center five days a week? Or can they come in three days a week? Is transportation and fueling those buses, as all of our superintendents at this table know, that becomes a big consideration when you're moving students from one district to another? Can we cut some of those costs? So we're also going to look to see, are we learning and implementing the best practices from what we learned about solid instruction in a remote environment, even in career and technical education, where so much of it is hands-on? Next slide. When we look at our students with disabilities, they also fell into not a significant pattern in terms of a locale, as an economically disadvantaged, but that was a significant drop for economically disadvantaged students. And in talking to the local directors and county directors of career and technical education, when I reference some of the transportation issues to our consortia programs or to our county technical campuses, the economically disadvantaged students were much less likely to have a vehicle to transport themselves. So when we had some of those challenges and students came from families where they had the option of having a vehicle and they could transport themselves, they were able to. And so we're going to dive a little deeper into economically disadvantaged, because I believe it's incumbent upon me and my staff to best understand how to handle the situation in the future. I'm proud of the numerous memos that we wrote, providing flexibility, guidance, and instructional guidelines for our T- guidelines for our teachers in the field when we went into the remote learning mode and the hybrid learning mode. We need to be prepared, as the Office of Career and Technical Education, what will we do next time? If this happens again, what is our best advice? And we want to put that together for ourselves, if it happens within our tenure here at the Department of Education, or for the people that would follow us. Next slide, please. We look at the CTE completers, and when you look at the four-year difference, we had 14,000 more over the core, almost 15,000 over the course of the four-year difference. That number did dip, as did the enrollment, and so it's kind of a logical relationship in that situation. One thing that we did do with our instructors is when we came into this, this school year, is we talked to them about, look at your instructional design, look at the way that you're delivering instruction, because what if you go into a remote environment? What should you be teaching in person that you have, if you switch to remote, you can then teach these other items? Unless a sequence of instruction in person is required for them to be able to apply their knowledge in their laboratory or work-based learning setting, or if it's specifically safety-oriented, because we all, our programs have a lot of safety training in them, how can we reorganize that in case all of a sudden, in January, your district goes back to remote? What you, what can you best deliver? That's a strategy, the strategy we shared, we hope that increases this year's numbers. When we look at the number of completers, the same analysis applies as to enrollment, that we didn't see any significant patterns. Next slide. Then the number of completers, based on students in CTE programs, there was a slight dip for students with disabilities, and a more significant dip for economically disadvantaged. And this is one of those areas that when we get our numbers for this current school year, we're going to then engage in some activities at our fall update to help our district and county directors to look at their numbers. And then depending upon what, how the numbers come out, we'll probably also ask our Office of Special Education here, under Director Rink, to assist us in delivering some of that professional development and strategy thinking, because we really want, in October, for our districts to look at their numbers that we're going to give them, but then what are their strategies? At the same time, we're going to look at districts that are, have similar characteristics and say, oh, wow, you did a really, really good job, but, sorry, Scott, you know, you need a little bit of improvement here. So we're going to help build and lift and learn from those who are able to do it well, and then hopefully build some relationships and strength, new relationships and strengthen existing relationships in the field, because they can help each other, because they're the individuals out working with the students, the teachers, and the business members. Yes, sir? This slide does include new data on the number of students that received a high school diploma in 2021, and if you look at the four-year difference, it was up over 13,000 students. It did drop by 216 students during the 2021 year. Then we look at the analysis of the number of students who received their high school diploma, which also includes your new data column of 2021. And again, there was not a significant pattern in the areas in which students, geographical areas in which students did not receive a high school diploma. When we look at our student groups, we did have 59 students with disabilities that didn't receive those diplomas, and we're going to take a look at those numbers and have some conversations with those county directors, because that number, we can really look at and determine if there's a way to help swoop back and catch those kids in some type of other MRS or transition programming, since they've graduated in their local community, and then make some recommendations to the Offices of Special Education within those local school districts of the students that did not receive those, and provide them with some suggestions, because oftentimes, we would, i- i- if we are, if we don't help these 59 students, from my experience of being a high school teacher and being a local administrator, if we don't reach out and really encourage individuals to help these 59 students, if not us, then who? While we were going through supporting our schools in COVID, my vision for the county directors and my staff was, we are going to lead COVID. While we are responding to the situation we're in, we set some really strong goals in Perkins Five. And for Board members who are present, and administrators in this room who are present during our Perkins Five presentations, and the authorization of that legislation, our program quality indicator we selected from the federal government was credentials. And through the year of school districts learning how to operate differently, our staff working tirelessly on guidance and direction, we also identified new credentials for all the programs that you see listed, and those were implemented this year. As the Director of this office, I could not be more proud of the ISDs that took on these grants, this work, and my staff, because we continue to improve public education through COVID. Next slide. This year, we're continuing that work with the programs that you see on the slide, and we're also working on new work-based learning, technical assistance, delivery, and reporting tools. For the first time ever, school districts reported, are required to report in four quadrants of work-based learning at the student level, so we know the depth of work-based learning every student is receiving, because this is one of the four components of a Career and Technical Education program, and it's what sets us as a different aside and different from other types of educational programs. And so that's something new, that we continued also during COVID, to move forward, because the students deserve it, and the worker pipeline needs that we're seeing in our communities, they need individuals who are trained and ready to go into employment.
So the next secondary learning opportunity that we're going to cover is providing some information to you around early middle colleges. And early middle colleges, as an opportunity, are kind of an anomaly through COVID. They actually continued to grow. Most of our programs saw some sort of dip, but if you see the numbers on the screen, you can see that the, the early middle college programs, in terms of student enrollment, grew by about 1,000 students from 1920 to 2021. If you go back to 1516, this program, in terms of enrollment, nearly doubled in that timeframe. So good news on the early middle college front, in terms of continued growth through COVID despite all of the challenges, you can also see the breakdown there between gender as well. Dr. Piles is going to provide some more specific information on EMCs.
As we look at the growth of early middle colleges in Michigan, and the number of students who are enrolled, we attribute that increase that to the number of students who are, who are already in early middle college, and are participating in remote dual enrollment. And when we think about our students that do not have a community college local to them, or one within their county, because there's only 28 community colleges in Michigan, many of the students in areas that aren't served by a community college must complete those programs in a remote environment. And so as school districts were going into the, into the first year of remote and, a remote in-person hybrid learning, the enrollments in those programs continued because it wasn't something unnatural to them. In talking to local school districts, some of them even put more students into those programs because they knew they could be successful, and they had the support services and the staff trained to assist our young people. And so it was a, a growth opportunity, and an opportunity that our school districts might want to look at in the future, is being able to weather different storms. And also, when you look at the research on online dual enrollment, and you look at the early middle college model, our students are doing really well, because it's not just a take this class, take this class, and take that class, they're in a program of study, a sequence of coherent courses, leading to a credential, 60 transferable credits to the bachelor's degree program they're interested in, or an associate's degree. And so we are, so, we are so excited to continue to have that growth in the midst of some of the other numbers that we're facing, and we're going to continue to build upon that. When you look at students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students, those numbers within our programs are still pretty solid, and they both grew for us this When you look at the number of students, and there's new data here, that obtained their diploma and their EMC outcome, we did have a slight dip in that number as well, and we will share that information with the early middle college providers. When we start to look at the ones, the students who did not complete, but yet exited to attend another training program, again, we have new data here, that number grew. So while those students didn't stay for their fifth year of education, they were ready to move on, and we call that a win. With goal number four, our staff here at MDE worked to develop a toolkit to assist districts in better utilizing their categorical funding. This year, we were asked to attend and present at the National Middle College Conference. As our CTE EMC model is unique to the country, we're doing a follow-up presentation in June nationally, and com, and starting this fall, the outcomes for EMC graduates, districts are no longer going to say, yes, they met the outcome, they're going to select a specific outcome, which will give us more robust data, give them more robust data, so we can help move them forward. And it's now my pleasure to introduce, introduce Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Dr. Piles. So for this next segment, we're going to focus on what was presented earlier, actually Advanced Placement, remembering that that is the opportunity where students, while in high school, have an opportunity to take college-level coursework and receive credit. Here on this slide, we'll see that students across the state are taking advantage of this accelerated and advanced coursework. In this next series of slides, we'll notice that the impact of, of the number of students taking AP-related courses, yes, it has dropped in the past year, but we did see growth in that four-year time span, where we saw consistently over 6,000 students continuously and gradually taking this opportunity to be a part of Advanced Placement programming. When we take a very close look at our student groups, you'll see here that the diversity of students taking Advanced Place courses is very evident, with an over 50% gain in the number of Hispanic or Latino students, and we're very, very thankful and grateful for that. Students of two or more races have the largest increase, as more students identify that they are part and are eligible to be a part of these differing opportunities. Here on this slide, when we take a very close look at our economically disadvantaged versus those that are not economically disadvantaged, we noticed that the enrollment has a variance. With MDE support and through legislative-funded means, we are able to offer our students the opportunity to be involved in these programs, meaning because they're economically disadvantaged does not take away that opportunity. Students that want to participate in AP and take the coursework, we are provided funding so that they have the right and the opportunity by reducing that barrier of cost of taking the AP course and the associated exam. When we take a very close look here at the number of tests taken by students and those that have the potential to acquire credit from the AP course experience, we see that the four-year trend for the number of AP tests taken and the potential for college credit shows gain. However, when we focus in on the one year, there is a difference, which is significant as a result of the pandemic. It is important to note here that the data is reflective here of all Michigan students, and so please know that the College Board does not necessarily break out the data between public and non-public enrolled AP students. There has been a significant drop in the percentage of students taking and passing AP courses or the exam itself when comparing the five-year difference. The data prior to the pandemic reflects a different perspective with an increase in all areas prior to the 2019-20 school year. The data also reflects the same trend in students scoring a three or better on exams, which is phenomenal for our students here in Michigan, making them eligible for credit at any community or four-year post-secondary student here in this state of, great state of Michigan. Here, when we focus on the number of AP tests taken by students for college credit, the data relative to students participating in those exams is different from those that are actually participating in the class. The numbers in the table indicate the number of AP course exams taken. In previous slides, we shared the trend indicating that student participation in courses is increasing or staying constant. So we have a little bit of work to do as it relates to, we want the students, yes, to be enrolled in the course, but we also want them to have the opportunity to take the exam and receive that college credit that they've worked so hard for. Specific to Advanced Placement and the efforts, you'll notice here that we have very intentional efforts. We are fortunate to be able to offer, through the legislatively funded program, free and reduced low-income reimbursements. And so that's where, working with funding that districts received, they are able to provide and pay for students to, not only to be enrolled in the class, but more specifically to participate in the exam. Additionally, the College Board itself offers a very viable opportunity through the College Board Opportunity Scholarships program, and we are fortunate here in the state of Michigan to report that nearly 11,000 students have been able to participate and receive funding by way of scholarship through this program. That scholarship total for the class of 2021 was over $36,000, and that's phenomenal. Going back to the reimbursement program, I would like to highlight and emphasize that nearly 13,000 exams were taken because of the reimbursement, to the tune of nearly $700,000. However, that is a great investment, to be able to offer that opportunity to our students. And finally, we want to share that the department is focusing on and continues to promote the AP potential tool, and we look to expand that. We are encouraging districts to utilize that tool to share with their staff and their students and their families the potential that the AP opportunity has. Moving into IB or International Baccalaureate, schools across the state of Michigan are authorized by the International IB programs to become International Baccalaureate World Schools. Upon successful completion of IB assessments, a student is awarded an IB transcript. Successful IB diploma program completers meet the Michigan Merit Curriculum Standards as a participating student. And now for some data specific to International Baccalaureate, we see here on this slide that there has definitely been growth in the number of students participating in district IB courses. With the increase of students participating, we see in the five-year trend here that they literally are preparing for the global workplace of tomorrow. If we take a look at where we started back in 1516, we'll see that there was growth. Yes, there was a dip, but that dip definitely was, was partly due to the pandemic and its In terms of enrolled students in a, in IB, I'm sorry, and when we look very specifically with student growth, again, we are able to report that the growth has been significant with all of our areas or student groups, but very specifically with our Hispanic or Focusing again on our economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged students, both groups have about the same percentage of growth over the last five years, and we're happy to see that for those areas in particular, that the growth is continuing. happy to see that for those areas in particular, that the growth is continuing. In terms of international baccalaureate efforts, again, there is legislative funding where we are able to support and provide funding and support through reimbursement. We have a very strong emphasis with our LEAs on communication and marketing guidance for those schools in the state that have chosen to have international baccalaureate status, and we make sure that we are very timely and we report and share with our legislature the effects that this opportunity of international baccalaureate programs offer our students. Moving on to the next opportunity of dual enrollment, which we finally refer to as DE. DE provides high school students the opportunity to enroll in post-secondary degree programs under the Post-Secondary Dual Enrollment Act. When we take a look at data for dual enrollment, we'll see that over the past five years, there has been nearly a 3,000 student increase in enrollment, and we're very, very happy about that. And based on efforts, both here from the department and within our local school district, we anticipate that growth to continue. We're happy to report that the number of community colleges across the state of Michigan have really stepped up when it comes to partnering with our LEAs to offer very viable dual enrollment And finally, very specifically to dual enrollment, the efforts, as you see here on the screen, we have very direct support to students and families, not only at the local level, but here at the department. Joining me here in the room today is Mr. Jeff McNeil, our education consultant, who works very directly with our local education agencies promoting dual enrollment and many of the other efforts that we've shared today. The information that is provided specific to dual enrollment focuses on policy guidance for districts and students, so that they are well aware of the opportunity and what it has to offer. Looking to expand efforts, we will continue to promote dual enrollment through webinars and partner with colleges along with districts to get the word out so that students will continue to enroll and do well. And finally, a great effort here within the department, the cross-office collaboration that Dr. Powell shared and talked about, we look to continue to refine policy and work together for both dual enrollment and early-middle college programming, so that we can continue to enroll students. And now, we go back to Dr. Kimmich.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. So the final secondary learning opportunity we're going to talk about in terms of metrics is around special education transition metrics. And so, we're going to look at the number of percent of youth, youth age 16 and above with an IEP who meet the compliance requirements and the results requirements. So the first slide gets at compliance requirements, and so these were, this is specific to the IEP of a youngster who's 16 or older. And what we look for is the compliant IEP according to indicator B13, where there are nine components of the IEP that must be completed. So we will shoot for 100% compliance, and you can see some growth, significant growth from 2015 to 2019, and a slight dip in 2020 in terms of the completion of that IEP with all nine of those factors addressed. And so you see, again, growth over four years and a slight dip, still at 90%, always shooting for that 100% compliance. And this is a new data point for us and one that we submit to the federal government on a yearly basis. The other metric really focuses on the results, and so this particular metric looks at youth who are no longer in school, who left school with an active IEP, and who are enrolled in higher ed, post-secondary ed, or training program, competitively employed within one year. So this is the results side, so a student leaves our system. Again, you can see the state-determined standard, those standards or targets are set each year, and for 2020, the target was 75%. And you can see, we almost met that in 2020, at 74.8%. Again, growth, the preceding four years, and a slight dip during COVID. And if you think about what COVID did to the job market in terms of employment opportunities for students, and what COVID did to college enrollment as well, you can see the dip there and the result that it had on our students. Secondary transition efforts, so what has the department done to help with this? On the compliance side, we provide a great amount of resources for ISDs and local school districts to help them address each of those nine required components of that IEP, and we also have technical assistance resources located on Catamaran, which is a website for locals and ISDs to refer to for all things special education. And then on the outcome side, we have strong relationships with folks in the field, different councils and other teams, there are six of them listed there that we work very closely with on transition-type activities, from the Developmental Disabilities Council to MRS to the Michigan Transition Services Association. So strong relationships in the field to help get these youngsters either employed, enrolled in a program, or enrolled in college. And with that, we say thank you, and we'll certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, presenters. President Albrecht.
Thank you for that presentation. Lots of great, helpful information in here. I just have one quick question. I'm not sure if you know the answer to this, but roughly what percentage of students, public education students in Michigan are considered economically disadvantaged?
Half.
That's what I thought, about 50, right?
Yes.
So when I'm looking at the AP numbers for the economically disadvantaged versus not, there's a stark difference, well over 50%, I would say, drop in those with economically disadvantaged who are taking part in AP classes, which seems to me like an equity issue. So I think you kind of addressed this a little bit, but can you talk about how we might be able to overcome some of those equity issues?
Sure, President Albrecht. As indicated, we are looking to work with districts through our AP expansion tool and encourage districts to utilize what the College Board has to offer as it relates to the marketing of that opportunity and to help districts become better with the marketing and recruitment of those students. So from the state level, working with the local level, there is a very intentional way through the AP expansion tool, which we are working on right now, looking at efforts of raising and closing, I'm sorry, that equity gap.
Is there anything that we as a board could be doing?
We always appreciate your support, and we will keep you involved and updated as we move forward with working with local districts in terms of the AP expansion tool.
You're welcome.
Mr. McMillan, and then Ms. Porter.
I would just note that in areas like California, New York, the way they are addressing the equity issue is by closing down AP courses and not because of the equity, quote-unquote, equity issue. So we'll see if that occurs here in Michigan. The AP tests taken, the data is AP metric data and college board, are these available for the public, the data?
To my knowledge, yes, those are available for public review.
Okay. I noticed that in like the CTE, you mentioned completers, but in the AP, you just said tests taken, but I don't see a metric on credit actually given.
Well, there are a few reasons for that. The first reason is that credit is shared at different institutions based on different standards. So some institutions provide no AP, no college credit for AP test results, some do it based on three, four, and five, some do it based on four and five, and some based on five. So there's no constant metrics, there's no opportunity to compare across institutions.
Let me rephrase it. There's no metrics about how the kids do, so I think you could probably say, these kids got a three, or you know, this percent got a three, or this percent...
That's a different story, and that's legitimate.
This percent got a four.
Absolutely, agree with that.
And because I know that, we've talked about this, I don't know how many years ago, when we talked about AP before, and I hope it's not controversial, I think some people say, you know, pushing kids into AP classes that maybe shouldn't be can be harmful to them, it can be something that is not helpful. They do better in a class that, you know, they need to be in as opposed to something that they can't, you know, they end up getting a two or a one, and, you know, I know that one of the kids said, you know, if you don't do well, keep going, and that's true, but I mean, are there, you know, can it be that we, you know, try to get numbers and metrics in the, while pursuing that, it may not be the best for the kids? That's all I'm asking. So I mean, that's why, it'd be good to see a three or a, how many got threes or fours?
Those are, those are, those are important pieces. I used to share those in precisely the same way in my old district, three or above the number, three or above the percentage each year. There is a very substantial debate in the education community about which rigorous experiences are the best and whether in fact rigor is of value. These six programs tug on one another, particularly the first five tug on one another quite a bit. What I mean by that is, is that if you are in one, it's not that you can't be in another, it's just hard to be, you can't, certainly can't be in all six, that there's only so much time in a day, week, month, year. The other thing is, is that you have proponents of AP, you have proponents of IB, you have others that swear by CTE or dual enrollment or early-middle college, and for that matter, transition services as well. So I think that different people have different senses of what's of greatest value. Our piece here in lifting up all six of these programs is not that one is better than the other, but that you ought to avail yourself of at least one of these opportunities in high school, if not more than one of these opportunities in high school. So that's, that's one, too. On the issue of AP rigor, and Dr. Chapman, you mentioned it, but I don't, I'm not sure that it was heard because it was early in your, in your communication. You mentioned that if young people get a one or a two, respect the fact that AP courses are on, AP tests have a five-point rating scale, one, two, three, four, five, five being the highest. And your point was, even if you get a one or a two in your initial AP class, the greater rigor has been found to be of value. It's been found to be of value in and of itself, number one, as an impetus toward greater achievement later on, number two, as an understanding of what it takes to achieve college credit in high school, number three. So I do think that there are some young people for whom particular experiences may be a stretch. I agree with that. But I would be careful not to extend that into the potential of harm, because I think oftentimes what we do is, we skinny back and protect young people, and in protecting young people from rigor, we inadvertently protect them from experiences that are going to stretch them and make them stronger in their lives. And that's particularly the case for historically underrepresented populations, economically disadvantaged, African-American, Native American, Latino, and the like. So I share this because we're about increasing AP participation, and not simply participation, but then the taking of the test and the success on the test, getting college credit on the test. We think that we can do better in the state, we think we're underperforming as a state in advanced placement, and we are going to improve these numbers. And Dr. Chapman will be back with us in the next six to nine months, talking in greater detail about what she shared with you in miniature, because that is an active conversation with Jeff McNeil, with Dr. Chapman, Dr. Daniels, and others, Dr. Cornell, and others in the department. Other questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Porter, and then Ms. Snyder.
First, I just wanted to say thank you for hearing about all six of those programs. I've had the opportunity to go to several CTE programs this year, and I've been absolutely blown away by that, and it was just wonderful to have that conversation about CTE programs and AP opportunities in the same presentation, just because it provides the idea that kids have options and opportunity in whatever career path they want to go on. Dr. Piles, I wanted to say I appreciated the dialogue of what you were talking about, about reimagining CTE programs coming out of the pandemic. You know, our world has changed, and it's essential to talk about that and take it into consideration in our learning environments, and so I was just really appreciative of that, because as I look at K-12, many teachers have felt that there should be some reimagining, and that is, we're still kind of business as usual in those places. And so knowing that you're thinking and having that forward, thinking on that, I think is going to be really essential.
Thank you.
I know that, Dr. Chapman, that you had spoken a little bit about the equity piece with the economically disadvantaged with President Albrecht, and I was assuming then that that tool is then used when you're looking at the diverse populations of students as well, when we're talking about our African-American students, Latino, and so on. I was just looking at the information and data and thinking about the population of our student population in the state, and it is not mirroring that in that data right now. So is that tool being used to address that same issue as well?
The tool will be used.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's used, as Dr. Rice was sharing, in minimal means at this point. So utilizing that and expanding that for both the educator, administrator, and the students themselves. It is a tool that readily identifies students by way of taking our state assessments. Built into that tool, and that's why it's called AP Potential, there is a means built in where it identifies who has the potential to become an AP student.
I was wondering about that, too, just in terms of accessibility and thinking about that as well with the CTE programs, because it also showed, at least in the data that we were looking at, that it's not mirroring our state population in terms of our diverse populations. So, Dr. Piles, is that an accessibility issue? I know that there's not CTE program options all across the, you know, some students don't have accessibility to CTE programs. I was just curious if that has been looked at at all in terms of the CTE data for students that are entering.
Yeah, we're currently working with our partners at the University of Michigan and our policy, some of our policy youth initiative, and they're working with each one of our 53 delivery areas for CTE and taking a deeper dive and looking at how each one of them is providing consortia services and countywide services, and we are going to take that data then and take districts and regions with like characteristics and bring them together so that if you don't, you're not offering as much here, but we're offering more here, and you're very similar in your characteristics, what can you learn from one another? And so it's, it's more about leadership sometimes than funding.
Right.
And also walking our leaders through those types of experiences. So that's something we've been working on now for about 18 months. It's a pretty deep dive, and so we are working on that.
Wonderful. You know, I was thinking, too, and this is just reflecting on things I've done in my, or that I, in groups I'm in in my own district, is that we've often talked, too, that not all families know of the opportunities and services and supports that their kids have, you know, long, and then they get into their secondary careers, and then they're failing, and then they see that these options are available, and then they are unable to do that. And so I know there's been conversations as well at the community level of making sure that families are really engaged and knowing the sorts of opportunities that their students have in their public education systems. And not that the schools aren't doing that, but they're often structured in either like nighttime events or things like that, that maybe not, doesn't have accessibility to all families. And so my wonder is, is if that conversation has started in terms of how you make sure within communities that those families also know that those opportunities exist for their kids before they get to that point.
I have heard from some of our CTE programs that they're offering the traditional in-person tours, but they're maintaining the remote tours as well.
Right.
To help reach more families. I know that some, some of our program, programs go to, and in my experience, when I was working with the Genesee Intermediate School District as a contractor, I went to evening events and to a couple of community centers, because many of the grandparents were responsible for the caregiving of their children, and we would provide a menu of services that their grandchildren or the students they were responsible for could be engaging in. And so we were charged in 2018 by the legislature to create the Michigan Career Development Model. Right now, my office and Dr. Daniel's office, the Office of Educational Supports, is going through and reevaluating that guide, along with Director Rink's Office of Special Education, and we're extending it into our early childhood programs and also out to our community college programs, so that it's a more comprehensive career development model for the districts that they're supposed to be implementing. We're going to take, we're taking it a step folder, a step further with our friends in Dr. Daniel's office, and it's going to go into MYKIP, and so it's going to now go to the local district level, where the local district is part of the school improvement plan, will need to review it and report on it, because current technical education is administered through the 53, through the 27 regions and 53 county agencies, so we're going to... So we're going to take that to the local district level to bring it to the attention of our local district leaders. And as we work with our stakeholder groups, we're going to provide a companion document on the implementation of the model. And that implementation begins at central office. It doesn't begin with the high school guidance counselor.
Right.
And so those are the things that we're working on, and we're going to be rolling those out early summer of 2023.
Awesome. That intentionality is so important. You know, I think in this age of technology, information is everywhere, but that doesn't always mean that people are as engaged in it as they, you know, necessarily could be. So I think that intentionality.
And if I may tie that back to your question?
Yeah, sorry.
So that, no, 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 no. I always want to tie that, that's a lot of information. I want to tie it back for everyone. That ties back to your question about how do students know about these opportunities? How do they know about IB and AP? How do they know about the transition services and how robust those can be with our agency partners, with MRS and Bureau for the Blind and different agencies? It's going to help then bring all of those options at that MYKIP level, so that they're actually documenting that they provided these experiences of awareness to families.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, our pleasure.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder?
I'll just keep it brief based on piggybacking on some of your comments and Leo's. It does, to me, you know, it does make sense to encourage students that are looking to get the rigor out of the AP courses, to get that to them well in advance, because even if they're headed into CTE, say their senior year, they might benefit from an AP Biology course if they're going into Health Sciences their junior year, or they may benefit from an AP Math course if they're going into Construction Trades or Auto Tech. That's something they need to be prepared for and encouraged, probably even to be thinking about in their sophomore year. So I know you said it doesn't go back to the academic guidance counselor, but it kind of, I mean, if they have exposure to the options in their freshman sophomore year, and they're having someone specifically speak to them about where they're at, where they're going, then that in fact does, I mean, I think that's the, probably the closest to the student you can get.
May I add something for you here? It's talking about the leadership and the implementation of the K-12 plan, which will become a P-20 plan, and oftentimes that implementation lands with the counselor.
Mm-hmm.
And that counselor doesn't have the influence over the entire system. And so I agree with you, they need to be aware of it, but so that we can now also make sure that the middle school counselors and educators are looking at career exploration, and our elementary school teachers are looking at career awareness, and they were doing those career preparation components in high school. It's about the leadership of the K-12 implementation, not disregarding at any level the role of the high school guidance counselor. And also, the majority of our high, of our high school current technical education programs do offer college credit as well. And I am so on board with the AP Biology for our Health Science students, or the AP Mathematics for our Engineering students. We do espouse that belief, because those are the core academic courses they need to be successful in their CTE career.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you for the presentation. I agree. It's a lot of information, and I like the way that it's packaged. And it is really good to see the way that CTE has evolved just over the time since I've been on the board. And I will continue to say that, you know, just making sure that as we think about our messaging to parents, that we are making sure that we're breaking down those thoughts around CTE, because there still are a lot of people who have, you know, that old thought around CTE. But it looks like the work has been done to really make sure that those programs are working for our students, and we definitely want to make sure that all students have access to that. And then my question, and I think that this has come up, and I know that this question has been answered before around the early, early middle college, and how that is funded, and how does that, if it does at all, impact the per pupil funding for, for that district?
So there's two specific funding options for early middle colleges. One is that for students who enroll into the five-year early middle college, the districts get a fifth year foundation allowance. And so they get an extra year of foundation allowance for the students, who are then traditionally on the college campus for mostly dual enrollment. And if you're in a CTE early middle college, we do have a per pupil funding amount through a Section 60, a one categorical for those programs as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any other reflections? Just, just to note that these are rich programs. They are well-received and well-supported across the state, may need to be more substantially received and more substantially supported across the state. All of our children have tremendous capability, capability of which they are only in small measure aware when they are in high school. And as Ms. Scott will tell you when she presents this afternoon, all of our babies need to be uplifted and told that they are capable of more, particularly at a time when their self-images are in flux, are in play. And so it's important to tell them early and often, you can, you will, you are capable, we're going to help you get there. There are gaps in equity across the state, some of those are funding, but some of those are about encouragement as well. You can go into some very remote corners of the state that have very few resources, but they are big on encouragement. You have other places, they're big on resources, they're low on encouragement. And children will find your expectations for them, whether you put them on the ceiling or on the floor. We thank you, presenters. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next item on the committee of the whole agenda, board, is presentation on partnership districts. This presentation provides an overview of the partnership model and district supports for partnership districts, education policy innovation collaborative, or EPIC findings on the partnership model, and plans for informal evaluations of partnership agreements. This is an informational presentation, and no board action is required. We welcome our presenters.
Dr. Steve Cornell, Chief Deputy Superintendent.
And Dr. William Pearson, Director of the Office of Partnership Districts. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. No test, although there could be a pop quiz. Presenters, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, board members. Good morning, everyone in the boardroom and those listening. It is my pleasure to be here to talk to you today, or actually, Bill is going to talk to you today, about the Michigan Department of Education efforts around partnership districts. So you will hear Dr. Bill Pearson, or Dr. William Bill Pearson, provide an overview of the partnership model and partnership districts. We will also share support for partnership districts. You will hear about findings from the Education Policy Innovation Collaborative, otherwise known as EPIC. And lastly, we will talk a little bit, or mainly, Dr. Pearson will provide for you information on the informal evaluation of partnership agreements. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Pearson.
Thank you, Dr. Cornell. Good morning, everyone. So continuing with the slideshow, the Office of Partnership Districts signed partnership agreements with nine districts in May 2017. An additional seven districts signed partnership agreements in February 2018. We're off a slide. Sorry about that. In 2017, the partnership district model was developed with the goal of improving student achievement levels at the lowest-performing schools in Michigan. The fundamental tenets of this new approach were to ensure that districts of low-performing schools facilitate their turnaround process, engage in district-level systemic improvement, engage multiple stakeholders or partners in the turnaround process, and determine their own measures for improvement. The Office of Partnership Districts signed partnership agreements with nine districts in 2017, seven districts in 2018, and 19 additional districts in July of 2018. The greatest count of districts served at any one time by the Office of Partnership Districts was Schools are identified for comprehensive support and improvement if they meet any of the following criteria. The school is in the bottom 5% of schools according to the Michigan School Index, or is a high school with a four-year graduation rate of 67% or less. The Office of Partnership Districts currently serves 26 districts and 98 schools. 19 districts have one school identified in their agreement, and seven districts have two or more schools identified for CSI supports. Many districts operate schools identified for CSI supports that are not partnership districts. For example, a school identified for supports via low graduation rate did not lead to a partnership district status. In fact, we have approximately 70 districts that currently operate CSI schools that do not have a partnership agreement. Each partnership district must develop a partnership agreement based upon a comprehensive needs assessment, and shall include measurable academic outcomes, accountability measures, and specific actions taken by the district to improve student achievement. This slide shows three examples of 18-month benchmarks. One example is 50% of all students building-wide will meet their growth target as evidenced by Northwest Evaluation Association Measure of Academic Progress Growth Assessment for Reading, and the district did meet this This slide shows two examples of 36-month goals. One example is student proficiency for English language arcs will increase by 4% as measured by the Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress. The Review of Goal Attainment, known as the RGA, is a multi-phased process designed to collect, review, and discuss evidence for the purpose of determining partnership agreement goal attainment. The RGAs occurred between January 2019 and June 2020, and of the 26 districts, 15 districts were on track. A district that is on track is meeting most of its goals or is making progress in meeting most of its goals toward improving student Districts identified as off-track with limited progress during the review of goal attainment is likely to be re-identified and would require more intensive supports. If a district is re-identified, it will be assigned to the intense level for assistance from OPD. Districts identified for this level of support will receive from the Director or Assistant Director of OPD, specific direction in writing their new partnership agreement, and direct onsite In March 2020, because of the pandemic, the OPD and partnership agreement liaisons had to pivot and realign in-person support to fit remote, distance, and/or hybrid instruction and work environments. During meetings with districts, several barriers were lifted, as noted on this slide. These barriers have been identified during the pandemic and are continuing. Here are examples of how OPD's Accountability Research and Evaluation Unit and partnership agreement liaison's support pivoted to remove barriers during the pandemic. The next two slides display percentages of select demographics and outcomes for partnership districts compared to state averages. All data comes from the MI School Data website, with partnership values displayed in blue and state values displayed in orange. This slide shows partnership district students are also greatly affected by dropout rate, student mobility, and homeless. Students in partnership districts may have one or more of these risk factors, and any one of them has an adverse effect on student outcomes. During the pandemic, OPD continued to assist partnership districts in remaining focused on their partnership goals. Highlights of OPD pandemic supports included ongoing collaboration and partnering with the Office for Career and Technical Education to offer information and technical assistance to partnership districts on CTE opportunities, funding, and program development, collaborated and supported partnerships in applying for the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant, and ongoing participation in completing grant requirements with the four partnership districts that are recipients. The OPD held three different networking events during the pandemic. In the spring of 2020, we provided OPD updates, meal distribution updates with Dr. Diane Kozinski, Office of Health and Nutrition Services, and health, safety, and wellness supports for students and families with Mrs. Lisa Gallagher, School District Consultant with the School Health and Safety Unit. In spring 2021, we provided OPD updates, and Dr. Stephen Goodman, Executive Director of the MI MTSS Technical Assistance Center, presented on accelerated learning. And most recently, in the fall of 2021, Dr. Rice presented on student engagement through diversity in literature. The MDE literacy team and district recipients of a literacy grant shared their learnings through implementation of the grant, and Dr. Catherine Strunk from Education Policy Innovation Collaborative provided a summary of year three of the partnership We received funding as allocated in Section 21H for partnership districts to implement their partnership agreement. Partnership districts received $6,137,400 for each of the last two years, of which 137,400 was designated for all partnership districts to purchase data analytical tools. This slide provides a summary of the total amount of 21H funding for fiscal years 2021 and 2022. 86% of 21H funding the last two years was spent in the categories above to support students in partnership districts. Professional development, data analytical tools, and content area coaches are examples of the remaining 14% of funded requests shared by the 26 partnership districts. These requests align with MDE Strategic Education Plan Goals 1, 3, and 7, which are: improve early literacy achievement, improve the health, safety, and wellness of all learners, and increase the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage. As shared through the EPIC research, partnership districts are primarily urban districts serving a large number of economically disadvantaged homeless and chronically absent students. All of these things combined created a greater need for the following supports: for technology and supplies, student laptops, student headphones, classroom smartboards, and hotspots; for literacy, literacy coaches, diverse libraries, and literacy interventionists; for health, safety, and wellness, social workers, behavior interventionists, and restorative justice professional development; for teacher retention, mentor teachers, and retention bonuses. Examples of 21H spending on literacy: high-interest leveled reader books purchased to allow students access to reading materials at their instructional independent level to increase reading engagement; literacy coach hired to work onsite with teachers to support the implementation of the Michigan State ELA standards and the essential practices of literacy. Examples of Section 21H spending for teacher recruitment and retention: new teacher mentors, tuition reimbursement for Grow Your Own programs to offer the opportunity for paraprofessionals to become certified teachers. Examples of 21H spending on academics and professional learning: training and support materials for teachers working online with students and families. Teachers receive additional support and professional learning to improve remote learning. Math and reading interventionists were hired to work with the lowest-performing students. Examples of Section 21H spending on health and wellness: school-to-home liaisons to build relationships with families and provide support, K-12; certified family therapists to work with students, families, staff, and leadership to increase attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. Education Policy Innovation Collaborative, or EPIC, is charged with conducting a multi-year evaluation of the implementation and efficacy of Michigan's partnership model of schools and district turnaround. EPIC's research comes from in-person interviews with district superintendents and completed questionnaires from and completed questionnaires from building leaders and teachers from both partnership schools and non-partnership schools. OPD values EPIC's findings as they inform our work with partnership districts. The work of EPIC further confirms the partnership district challenges in providing health and wellness supports. These challenges have been intensified by the ongoing pandemic. Therefore, the second highest request for Section 21H funding was for health and wellness. Two reflections shared from leaders during in-person interviews with EPIC. I just think the term partnership, it has allowed us, when you talk about the evolution, it starts off on a positive note as opposed to starting off with a school improvement grant, or it's a turnaround. It's given us resources and communications with the Department of Education, not only through our liaison, but through when we did have the face-to-face kinds of meetings that PALS held. In these two graphs, the green line represents low-achieving students, and the blue line, higher-achieving students in partnership districts. The vertical blue line represents the partnership model implementation starting point. Any dot above the zero horizontal axis represents a positive effect on mathematics. Prior to the pandemic, positive effects were found for both high and low-achieving students, and the greatest effects were for low-achieving students in Cohort 1 partnership districts. A positive effect of the partnership model is demonstrated for all students in both cohorts of partnership districts. Effect size is a value measuring the strength of the relationship between two variables. In this case, mathematics performance on the M-step and the partnership model. Effect size is used when evaluating the strength of a statistical claim. The United States Education Department granted Michigan assessment and accountability waivers for the 2019-20 school year and an accountability waiver for the 2020-21 school year. As a result, this is the first year in three years that state assessments were available for the purpose of determining partnership district status. This graph shows the spring 2021 NWEA/ELA scores for districts with similar demographics to partnership districts. The takeaway is that partnership districts fared similarly to, and in some cases slightly better than, districts with similar demographics and prior proficiency rates. Due to the pandemic, accountability waivers from the United States Education Department the past two years and the resulting foregone student learning, the Office of Partnership Districts will conduct an informal evaluation of each partnership agreement instead of a formal evaluation of a partnership agreement. Formal evaluations were originally scheduled to take place the fall of 2020 for Round 1 districts and the fall of 2021 for Round 2 and Round 3 districts. The emphasis of the informal evaluation of partnership agreements is about progress made toward the district's partnership agreement goals and will take place this fall. The district is asked to collect evidence to demonstrate progress made toward each of their partnership agreement goals. The collected evidence is then submitted for review by the district's ISD, RISA, and the Office of Partnership Districts and becomes an integral part of an onsite structured conference. Partnership districts will be asked to respond to these three guiding questions during their onsite structured conference. All districts will be released from their partnership agreements this fall. Though some current partnership districts will be re-identified when the new list of schools designated for comprehensive support and improvement is released, newly identified and re-identified partnership districts will develop partnership agreements. And to close, we share one last quote from EPIC. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cornell, Dr. Pearson. Board members, questions, comments, reflections, Mr. McMillan?
I appreciate the presentation, particularly the samples of goals and things like that. I really, I don't think I've seen that or, you know, thorough of a selection. You know, a lot of it is based on tests, which, you know, I'm not a big high-stakes test person. Let me go back before that. For those that might not have been here for other presentations, like your opening, you know, how this all started. I mean, really, you know, I think Pam and myself and Cassandra and others had a role in this as opposed to the, what was that, that Snyder had? The Office of...
School Reform.
Yeah, the Office of School Reform. And so, based on a ton of pushback from not just Democrats, but myself and others, I think, you know, we ended up with something that was a lot better. And I'm, you know, I have a particular interest, and it's why I've asked to have this on the agenda. As far as, you know, I know they get in there, it sounded like through tests, like, oh, and also graduation levels, so those were the two. When you negotiate the agreement, and it is kind of a negotiation, isn't it? I mean, kind of, from what I understand, the district has quite a say as far as this is what we would like, our, you know, what we'd like to measure in achievement. Can they select a different test? Does it have to be, I mean, you know, I'm going to go back to the old, you know, there's some that are Common Core aligned and some of them that are not. The old Iowa test is not, some, the old one. Can they say, you know, we want this exam instead of the NWEA or the M-step? Can they say we'd prefer to measure this as far as progress goes?
They can determine their benchmarks and their goals, and they can determine their local assessments. Most districts choose NWA or I-Ready. There's a couple other ones that are popular, but those are the most popular. But the M-step is still a requirement for districts to take, and proficiency rates and growth scores will come from the M-step scores and from local data. So when we had put together, you know, four years ago, an evaluation of the partnership agreement when we were, before the pandemic, we had based it on 200 points, and you had to either get 2/3 of your local benchmark, or your local goals met, or 1/3 of your state goals met, because we believe that the state test is more difficult when it comes to the proficiency and growth weights than it is for NWA or I-Red. So we had the option of either of those for them to be successful, to be able to pass the, get, you know, meet the requirements for the partnership agreement.
Again, I'd rather it not be Common Core aligned, because I don't want them to have to worry about doing three different ways of math and being confused and all this problem, so. And then finally, I've always advocated, I think I have at least, that there should be some kind, I'd love for some kind of form of parental surveying that goes on and, you know, as far as metrics go. Are the parents happy? Are there areas that they would like to see? And then measure whether those areas have been met. And I know that that's not something that's happening. I wish maybe a district or two would kind of take that on as part of their agreement. But could they do something like that? Could they say as part of our turnaround, we want to make sure parents are happy? Or, you know, we want to work on areas where they'll be happier?
When Round 4 districts are identified and they start writing their partnership agreement with the Office of Partnership Districts, they can, when they do their comprehensive needs assessment, we're going to use, a lot of it's going to be based on MYKIP that they've been, you know, promoted to and using in their district to decide what their continuous improvement's going to be on. They could say, we have a goal, we have a benchmark, we want to, you know, do some surveys for the family surveys for the district. Yeah, they have that opportunity.
Cool, thanks.
So a note, they not only can do it, they should do it. And districts are increasingly dipping into this space. They were doing more of it pre-pandemic. They may have gotten away from it a little bit during the pandemic because they received so much feedback. But I anticipate more of it moving forward. It is integral to improving schools, there's no doubt, yeah. The other thing is, I think, to Mr. McMillan's question, if you could distinguish between process goals and product goals? Because I heard the two of you go back and forth about product goals, if you will. And if we could talk a little bit about the process goals?
Process goals are goals that will, the district determine will help them raise student achievement. For example, reduce chronic absenteeism. Edit or work or improve your school improvement plan. Have professional learning communities in place, you know, once a month. So that process to help districts raise student achievement. Then there's the outcome goals are really your local data and M-step.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Did you have a question?
Can you, and this can be in follow-up, it doesn't have to be right now. I'm just curious, when I hear you say 2/3 of your local goals met, 1/3 of your state goals met. If we can get that defined in some way, so I understand what that looks like. Is it different for each district?
So...
2/3 of your local goals versus 1/3 of your state goals? I'm assuming that's different for each district. But what might one, you know, what might they look like? What does that mean?
We can get something like that.
Okay.
So, so you're differentiating between local benchmarks and state assessments? So a local benchmark might be NWA used by 70% of the state, the state's LEAs. The state tests would be M-step, MyAccess, MME.
So it's all test-based, it's not, there are no other...
No, not at all. That you can have other metrics, both from a product perspective and a process perspective. But with respect to state tests, we differentiate between locally chosen benchmark assessments and state-chosen and state assessments as well. So, so a local school district might choose STAR or I-Ready or NWA MAP, which is used by the significant majority of. But all districts participate in M-step or MME, for example, yeah. Ms. Porter?
I just wanted to share a comment, because this year, and I've shared at the board table, I had the opportunity to go to three different partnership schools across the state. And I, before I went to the first one, I really wondered how that system was going to work with the MDE and the school district, as obviously they are identified as having a lot of needs that they need support with. But I was just incredibly impressed at the liaisons that work directly with the schools and how they really build relationships with those, not only the administration, but the teachers that are working in those places, and that collaborative opportunity for districts was, I was just incredibly impressed by it and so enjoyed all three days I spent in partnership schools. So I just wanted to share that because, you know, I think sometimes when, you know, people hear about partnership schools or districts, then it's looked at as maybe, oh, they are having so many issues and problems. But it really is a collaborative experience, and all three of those spaces I had the opportunity to visit were places where the dedication was so high and the drive to help support students and their success was just limitless. It was, all three of those spaces were just a joyful day for me. And I just wanted to share that, again, at the board table, because it really was some of the highlights of my year of going to those places, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Porter. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I go back to Mr. McMillan's opening comments. Dr. Rice, Dr. Pearson, myself, before I joined this life here, were very frustrated with the Office of School Reform, and I cannot reiterate enough how much I know that these partnership districts appreciate MDE's change several years ago under the leadership of Brian Winston to begin partnership districts, and then under Dr. Rice's leadership to continue that system and that support, especially during the pandemic, when everybody was experiencing issues, but especially those schools that are struggling on all sorts of levels. You're right, Tom, it's not just about the tests. It's about the chronic absences. It's about family crises that need support from the schools also. It's about hungry children. It's about transience, where we have to move to another area and, oh, now we have to move back, through no fault of their own. That's not pointing a finger, it's just the reality of what it is. And to be able to have MDE there to provide those supports, to say, okay, we know where you're at, we're going to move in this direction or help you in this direction, I know has been appreciated. So I echo Leah's comments about that and appreciate the fact that we still have this system in place for those schools that need it and for probably some schools coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Gloria Chapman, our Assistant Director in the Office of Partnership Districts. Could give the queen's way, there you go. We appreciate her, we appreciate the entire Office of Partnership Districts. They do important work. You will be hearing from the Office of Partnership Districts about partnership districts and the work, not just of OPD, but the work of the department, because we're re-reflecting upon the model as we intimated. There will be more support needed for certain districts, less for other districts moving forward, and we anticipate that. We expect that we will be presenting another three times to you in the next 12 months. So just be cognizant of that. This was not meant to be the be-all, end-all presentation for OPD. It was meant to be an initial wedding of the appetite associated with OPD that will be back soon to discuss more. And then just one other note on the way we measure success. To narrow the performance of any school or school district down to tests, and particularly a once, you know, a snapshot test is an absurdity. And I think most educators feel that strongly. Whether they were brilliant test takers, or they weren't brilliant test takers, most realize the fallacy of overweighting tests in terms of the judgment about the strength of a school or schools, a district or districts for children. That said, this is a system that is still very, very substantially affected by a point in time in American public education. And it's the No Child Left Behind chapter in our history, which has not been left behind. Just want to be clear, that's No Child Left Behind Act of 2001, signed into law by President Bush, January 8, 2002, five years of NCLB, several years thereafter of Race to the Top, several years thereafter of Every Student Succeeds Act. They all have pretty similar premises, and they are all based on, at least in part, high-stakes tests. And most of the educators in the room, and many outside of the room, reject that notion as a way of judging educators, students, schools, and districts. So that is something, in addition to putting the agenda on, up for unanimous approval, that is something about which I think we mostly agree in the room, yes?
We've got a few minutes, I won't, I'll ask a question now as opposed to the next time they come before us. But, so you, yeah, I was going to talk about the NCLB, the ESSA. So it's my recollection that the hammer that used to be closing schools and, you know, giving them ratings and, you know, and the 5%, and how do you get out of the 5% and all that? I mean, there used to be kind of a hammer. Didn't that, I don't know if it was the repeal of one of those, that the federal mandated hammer? Currently, you know, if they fail to emerge after 36 months, is there some, there's not a federal law anymore, is there?
There is no federal mandate around closure. You are correct. It really is driven by the state Every Student Succeeds Act plan. Happy to reshare on that. And in fact, the next time we're in front of you, we'll be talking about a whole slew of different acronyms: CSI, TSI, ATS. We may even throw TSA, just in case you're planning on traveling anytime soon. We may throw in Alice, no restaurant intended, or two uses of Alice conceivably. But I think there's some value to re-reflecting upon that. To your direct question, there is no... To your direct question, there is no federal mandate for closure anymore. That does not preclude a state from either including it in its state ESSA plan or having it as a part of a state statute, but it is not federally mandated.
Do we have either of those in the state?
We do not currently have either of those in the state. I was not, that was not a slide swipe in any way, shape, or form. We do not have any of those in the state. It's not to say that there aren't some people who think that that's a value, but I think most people realize that it obscures bigger issues.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions or comments, concerns? We are sitting at 11:56. Board, this was a rich morning. Thank you very much. We will rebegin at...